Good evening, welcome to tonight's special meeting of the Bethel Board of Finance on today, Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020. Let's call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda tonight is consideration of some minutes of special meetings. Let's go down just in calendar order, first night, November, excuse me, Monday, February 10th. Wow, sorry. So let's give everybody a minute to look at the minutes for Monday, February 10th. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Next, February 11th.
Nineteenth.
I'll give them to her.
No.
Yeah.
It's Deion here.
Yes.
She does a lot of jobs today.
We made a couple moments.
We just adjourned. I have to get the live stream though one from that computer, so once I get, I'll go on in here.
So we had the first night's minutes, February 10th. Brian motioned to approve, Robert seconded, unanimous approval.
One abstain.
Yeah, I abstain.
One abstain, yes, sorry. Tuesday, February 11th.
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Deion, I abstain as well.
Time out, time out. I think the agenda just has a typo in it, like there's only one special meeting on February 11th. Unless if we recall, that was the night we had a regular meeting. So let's assume we did not, let's move over to the minutes for Wednesday, the 19th.
I think it was a special joint meeting on the, on Tuesday 11th because it was a different.
No, it was a regular meeting. And you know why? Because I planned to make a motion and I wouldn't have done it if it wasn't a regular meeting. That's the only reason it sticks in my mind.
I thought it was the time, okay.
I'd make a, oops. Make a motion to approve the minutes of Wednesday, February 19th.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One more, Thursday, February 20th. The folks are there to look at them. Entertainer motion to approve.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of February 20th as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so we're done with the administrative work, moving on to the first substantive topic for today. Board of Selectmen's going to present the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget for the Board of Finance. Today doing that is Selectman Richard Strickland. Welcome, Rich.
Good evening, everyone. First Selectman Nick Bakker is under the weather, so I'm here to present the Board of Selectmen's budget to you. We met yesterday and we went through the entire budget and came up with a bottom line number, and that's why I'm here tonight to present to you. Mr. Nick Bakker had presented a nice PowerPoint program to us yesterday. I'm going to suspense the formality of that. It is in your packet if you'd like to look it over. So we'll go right to the nuts and bolts of what we're here for tonight, and that is to go over the line-by-line accounts. So the first one is account 100 for Selectmen's office. The request was $295,586 and the Board of Selectmen approved $295,586. If there's any questions while we go along with this, I'll try to answer them or Bob or Brad will help them in that phase. Alright, any questions? Alright, next account is 110, the Treasurer's Office. That's, number is set by you people, the Board of Finance, and requested was $5,500. And that's what the Board of Selectmen approved was, $5,500. The Board Finance, or not the Board Finance, Finance Department requested $467,099. The Board of Selectmen recommended that amount, $467,099. And in your packet, you'll see the, some narratives why it has gone up a little bit or down. Mostly all the accounts go up because of the kind of contractual obligations for the employees. But in that particular department, salaries and the auditing costs was a factor there.
So there's a new employee in that department? Or there were only a new employee?
No, there was an employee there that started back a little while ago, and they're steps. So that person's at a full step now, so they're making the full pay of that position.
They're getting a raise. It's a raise, it's basically a raise, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Town Clerk, 130, how it was requested, $238,557. Board of Selectmen approved the $238,557. Cost drivers there was the education expenses and election expenses for that department. They also oversee some of their election duties.
Excuse me, Rich, wasn't it also the administration of the kiosks and the?
No, that's, no, that's not in there. That's something that you people will take up later on to see if you want to give her more money for that.
Oh, it's up, okay.
No, that's, that's not in there.
I know, for some reason I thought.
No, it was discussed at the hearing that night, but there was, there's no money for that in here.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and just to be clear, it's because there's no additional expenses due to that, so that's why you really don't see it impacting the Town Clerk's office.
Right. You know, she, she had come before you because of the time that she spends on it. She was looking for a stipend for working at work. That's something you'll be taking up later. Account 140, the Assessor's Office. The requested amount was $240,337. The Board of Selectmen approved $240,377. That's, that's where the four dollars that supremacy was the other night. It was 77.
Should be, or?
77.
It's supposed to be 77. That's what we approved.
That's what's on the, that they requested was 30.
Well, there was a typo in the requested amount.
There was a typo in the pitch page last night.
Yeah, we gave them $400. And the cost things there were the contracted salaries, the education expenses and auditing expenses in that department. Alright, the next one is account 150, the Tax Collector. Requested was $212,659 and Board of Selectmen approved $212,659. Same thing there, salaries, and actually there was some savings in the office postage there. Account 160, Professional Services. It was requested at $256,080. The Board of Selectmen approved $256,080. And the cost drivers there was the increase reflected, the actual historical expenditures for legal fees in that department. That was always kind of underfunded and you'd have to make changes at the end of the years to do it, so. There's a couple of big cases. There's some contract negotiations going on and there's a review of the yourselves on the evaluation, so that's a big expense on that. Account 170, the Appropriate Court. Was requested $5,733 and the Board of Selectmen approved $5,733 as our original cost share for our, the Building Inspector. He's up from what it was last year. He's requested $290,164 and the Board of Selectmen approved $290,164. And that cost driver there was additional part-time hours for the workload. And that particular department has brought in over $400,000 last year, so they kind of paid for themselves there.
Rich, can you give us the total increase in part-time salary it came out to, what the request was? I know you had some part-time salary this year.
Right.
What was the actual increase in the part-time, the additional part-time?
Seventeen thousand.
So an additional seventeen, because how much was in originally?
I think last year they had seventeen as well.
So it's up to thirty-four?
So up to thirty-four thousand it would be. So the total's thirty-four, but seventeen isn't it? Okay, thank you.
Department 190, Information Technology. The requested amount was $326,422 and the Board of Selectmen approved $326,422. Cost drivers there was the salaries and contract services, the licensing fees for all the programs that we have. Next account is account 200, Social Services. The requested amount was $89,289 and the Board of Selectmen approved $89,289. There was a little increase in that particular department and it was an increase in the eviction storage fees. Account 210, Town Insurance. It was originally requested as $1,427,524 and the Board of Selectmen approved $1,399,999.
Rich, do you know what the actual expenses were for 2020?
It's, it's flat. It's the exact same thing from the year before. They originally told us, the broker, that our lab policy was going to be a zero percent increase, which was built into their budget, and three percent for workers' comp, but yesterday I got an email from them and the three percent was dropped and it's the same as the year before, $1,399,999.
That's what we actually spent the year before.
Account 220, Fleet Maintenance. The requested amount was $344,550. The Board of Selectmen approved $344,550. The increase there was for the increased cost of parts of the aging vehicles and the synthetic foils that are needed in newer vehicles now. Account 230, Public Works. The requested was $352,171 and the Board of Selectmen approved $352,171. I don't know if you all know that the cost driver there was the salary allocation for the Public Works Director. It's no longer shared with the Public Utilities Director, so it's entirely on the town side now.
Rich, the Utility Director comes out of the Utilities Department, so that pays his, his full time salary.
Yes. Before it was a shared department and then when we got our own, they shared sort of the learning process, but now we kind of wean the town side off of the public utility side.
I'm sorry, Rich, I just want to be clear. There are two positions, and why does that fill, right? And then there is a Public Works Director, and then there would be Public Utilities Director.
There's, right, right now the Public Utilities Director is helping oversee the Public Works Department.
And the salary for the Public Utilities Director comes out of Public Utilities.
Correct.
And the other one comes down through the town exclusively instead of being shared. Thank you.
Account 240, the Highway Department. Was requested at $2355,057 and the Board of Selectmen approved $2181,541. It was a reduction of $273,516. And basically what it was, was in the Road account. Originally, they were asking for over $900,000 in the Road account and the first Selectman in his original budget had brought it down to 800,000 and last night's meeting, the Board voted to take the $900,000 out of that. So we're flatlining the Road account at 700,000, which was currently funded.
So the, what, the original request was 973?
Correct. You know, we looked at where we could take some money from and unfortunately, you know, there was a list of, there's a list of rows in your packet that'll have to be prioritized unless the Board of Finance puts more money back into the account. But they'll have to prioritize the list and do what they can to the amount of money that they receive. They always have done that, so. The Transfer Station was requested at $195,596 and that's what the Board of Selectmen approved was, $195,596. Account 250, Planning and Zoning was requested at $253,428 and then the Board of Selectmen approved $250,428. And one of the cost drivers there was, one of their new employees also has made it to the final steps, so he's making a little bit more money than he had made before.
Can I just ask a quick question about that? So does that mean that it's a length of time that they're there and then they graduate to the full step, like almost like a probation period? Oh, and then they, is it like six months or something?
No, they're, they're brought in at eighty-five percent of their salary base and then each year they go up a percentage.
Okay, so they've been there for a year and they get their full step?
He's probably here about four years or three, three years.
Oh, okay. So every year he gets.
It's over a period of time that it goes up, it's not.
I got it.
Building Maintenance. Building Maintenance requested $810,462 and that's what the Board of Selectmen approved was the $810,462. The cost driver there was mainly due to the new police station maintenance contracts for the cleaning and the programs that are in the, in the building, you know, the generator, the elevator. They didn't have an elevator in the old building. It's a lot more complicated building now with fire and suspension system and.
Fabulous. No, I'm just saying, floor finger, because it sounds different.
Tree Warden is up a bit from previous years. It was requested at $130,400 and that's what the Board of Selectmen approved was, $134,000. And it was, the cost driver there is to increase the removal of dead trees for public safety issues.
I have a question about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know what the criteria are for, for what's a tree and what's a bush? Like for as far as public, you know, parks and rec, do some of the clearing? And the tree warden specifically does the trees?
Right, the Park and Rec really does small trees and bushes.
Right.
And trees that are on the park property in McCawer Park and things like that. But this particular account is mainly for tree removal on the road sides.
Okay, so not in the parks?
Well, if it's a large tree, they'll probably come in and take the tree down because Park and Rec is not equipped to take large trees down.
Okay, I just didn't know what makes.
But they do what they can with their staff.
I was just sort of asking, when is a tree a tree? Like is it this big, this big? I don't know.
When, I can't answer that.
When a tree becomes a tree.
Typically over fifteen feet.
Is that true? Okay.
Thank you.
It's fifteen feet. That's, they consider it a tree now.
Thanks, Mr. Ellis.
Account 290, Emergency Management. There's an increase in costs there. It increased, the requested amount was $39,306. The Board of Selectmen approved the $39,306 and it was an additional $10,000 cost to the radio tower lease. We put more equipment on that particular tower for the police station and it's a vital link to the town's communication system. At one point the town was trying to buy that tower, but we lost out on it, so we have to pay the rent.
Rich, is there an option to buy a different?
Then we would, then we would have to move all the equipment and it's cost effective.
It wouldn't be cost effective, sure.
You'd have to buy the property and put up the tower and.
Sure.
Yeah.
Geography too.
Yeah, that's the biggest thing is the geography has got to be at a certain height. That's one reason why that tower at the, the new police station had to be so tall. It had to get a signal up the spring hill.
So Rich, I think I remember it's 17,000 a year, right, the lease? Is it 17,000 a year?
That's the rental for the equipment we have on that tower, yep.
Seventeen thousand, right?
That's total.
Right, so does that mean it was $7,000 last year and it went up to 17,000?
It went up ten.
Ten thou, right, from seven to seventeen.
Right.
Is that an annual lease?
That's kind of huge.
No, there's like seventy years left, I think, on that, maybe six or seven years.
And it's pro-rated each year or?
No, it's the same amount. Well, right now it's the same amount. Who knows what's going to happen after the lease term expires.
Yeah, when does the lease expire?
Well, was there, there was a different owner of the tower.
Correct.
Originally.
We were trying to buy it from him.
Tower, that's when we were trying to buy it and this, another company bought, ended up buying the tower and probably changed the numbers that.
And isn't, wasn't it said that that's the only location where it does reach everything that needs to be reached, the signal?
Yes.
I think that's the highest point in Bethel, isn't it? Swing out.
So how long is our lease at that level? About how long is the lease for at 17,000?
Seven years.
I think it's another seven years on that lease.
Seven years.
And Bob, I'm sorry, but maybe fleshing out Dee's question a little bit more, is it a flat lease or, I thought it had an escalation to it?
I don't recall. I think it's a flat lease, but I'm, I can't swear to that. I'd have to find out for you. Hold on.
So maybe more every year or every couple of years?
The Fire Marshal account 300 was requested at $108,057. The Board of Selectmen approved $108,057. Again, that's one of the departments that is being hit by the growth of the town. There's an increase in part-time inspections. Increase in the educational expenses and an increase in the buying the new fire code books. Mr. Galliford needs that presentation to us. Account 310, Bethel Fire Department. Was requested at $183,750. The first Selectman recommended approving the approved amount for last year at $182,900. Then there's a note there that some of the equipment that they asked for would be funded through the CNR account. The Stony Hill Fire Department was requested at $105,850. The Board of Selectmen approved $142,750. And the same thing there, some of the equipment that they were asking for was taken out of the budget and is going to be moved over to, hopefully be moved over to the CNR. Account 330, Registered Voters. That's up. The, the original amount requested was $108,080, $108,080. And there was, since that was requested, there was another little request came in or there was a, something that was left off the list. So the, the Board of Selectmen added a little bit more to that. We funded the Registered Voters at $110,680. And again, the cost drivers there is anticipated elections and some canvassing expenses. The registers decided not to go out and hire a private contractor to do some of the works and they're going to do it within-house and they felt that they could save some money by doing it themselves. Account 340, Town Boards. That was requested at $58,750 and the Board of Selectmen approved $53,750. It was $5,000 taken out of there because of the reduction of the Charter Commission is really at the end of its work now and it was reduced by the $5,000. Account 390, Employee Benefits.
350, Health Department.
I'm sorry, thank you. Moving right along here. Our account 350, the Health Department. And again, that was the department has seen an increase in their workload, so that account is up. It was requested at $375,983 and that's what the Board of Selectmen approved was, $375,983.
How much of that was new part-time work approved? Dollar?
Health Department.
350.
350.
While he's looking that up, the cost factors, the increase in the workload, additional inspections imposed by the state, that's where the state came down and said we have to do massage parlors and the nail salons. And then also there was an increase in the mandatory lab and testing costs. The, some of the part-time hours for salary was in contracted because she contracts that out. So the contracted is up, 17,000, I think most of that is contracted.
So contracted, thank you.
Our account 360, the Police Department. Was requested, requested at $4998,361. The Board of Selectmen approved $49,4692. The first Selectman had requested in his proposal to the Board of Selectmen that we only fund one officers and three cruisers at the meeting. At the meeting, I made a motion that we add the other officer back in. I believed that by having both officers on duty, we'll cut down on the overtimes. Currently, there are two officers that have military duty and they're technically not on the force. They're on the force on, on paper, but they're not physically on the force, so.
But that salary goes back into paying overtime.
Overtime. So rather than paying overtime, why not hire the officers?
What happens when they come back?
Because.
Well, we'll have to pick them up, they requested more people anyway. Yes, man?
I mean, with the overtime, you know, the chief said he didn't believe it would reduce our overtime amount. Cost, and I understood why, you know, and I do a lot with schedule work and stuff, yeah. So, so I understand why, you know. I guess the need is, is to understand, you know, the minimums and what does a normal shift have? And that's how we know, you know, really what will the effect be of two officers? Because I know they run one supervisor and two patrol officers. You know, they generally have a detective in the building. Because right now they're staffed at thirty-nine, right?
Right.
So two of them are administrators.
Administrator, right.
Correct, so you have thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven and two aren't there a lot of the time.
Yeah.
Alright, and then, and then you have anybody else on sick leave or workers comp too, so.
I guess, you know, for me, the question is, and, you know, I'm just trying to get your opinion on it. You know, sometimes I find it easier and more cost-effective for the town to pay some of it in overtime because you're not paying in benefits.
Yeah.
That's okay.
But you know what, also you, you burn out people, make them work all over overtime. Or, you know, you, you go down through the list and, you know, I can't work or. So I, I think it's beneficial to the town with the increase in the population. And, you know, they presented some statistics to the board of, to the joint board of the rest that have gone up. And, you know, the duties that are happening in town here, the requirements. And, you know, there also are first responders, you know, the paramedics and, and not the paramedics, but the first responders.
I understand.
How many?
That was my logic of adding to it.
Yeah, I just wanted to get.
How many officers are there that spread, the overtime is spread over?
Well, it would be.
Well, back out.
There's thirty-nine less two.
Okay.
Three lieutenants is thirty-five, minus three detectives is thirty-two. Take out your SROs, you probably have a patrol force of three officers, if I had to guess.
I know, we need to discuss.
Yeah, we could discuss.
Yeah, that was the reason for adding.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know the reasoning for adding it, that's all.
Rich, before you move on, the two officers that are one deployed and one half-deployed, I don't know if there's a term for it. Do we have any idea when they're coming back or when their fulfillment of the military is over?
No.
So we could, so we don't have those officers, so we could like replace or hire one? And then worry about it?
Well, that's what Matt had proposed to the board of selectmen was to hire one. And, and the vote on the board of selectmen was to put it to two.
Mm-hmm.
I think it was two to one vote on that.
We don't really, if we just do one, we don't need to increase that account because that salary money is already in there for the two officers that we are not paying, but are employed for us.
Well, but if they came back, you would have.
Right, if they came back, but we just said we have no idea, so.
You actually can't do that.
Technically, you're right, you would, but you have to fund it and then you're back to back out.
But I don't think that's the reason why they put two additional officers in there. They need additional officers.
Also, yeah.
Because the chief is looking to go to afford a, a shift. He needs four out there, especially during the day and second shift. So I think that's the reason, it's not so much to replace these fellows.
So, but he doesn't have them now.
He doesn't have those, that's Richie's rationale.
So, right, so if we had one or two, it increases our paper number, but it doesn't increase.
The four.
The four.
People on the road.
The budget or, or anything.
Yeah.
No, that, you have to put that salary line in, you can't add a position and not add the salary line.
The salary's already included for the two.
It's not though, what I'm trying to say is.
They are, they are on the force.
You, you can't, you can't.
They're on the force, but we're not paying, right?
I, I understand what, what I'm trying to tell you is.
If he comes back tomorrow.
You might not be paying them right now, you still have to budget for the extra salaries.
I understand that.
And don't forget, those salary lines, a lot of time, Bob has already said, we're using to pay for overtime when they're over on overtime and all this, so you have to be really, if you're adding an officer, you have to show it in the budget. You can't say, well, it's really a savings, because it's really not, because you have to show that in the budget. You, you can't say we're budgeting for thirty-seven officers even though our roster's at thirty-eight, you can't do that.
So then essentially what you're saying, the money that we have in negotiated salaries, we could take those officers' salaries away and add it right to overtime?
You, you can move it, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, because, you know, we do this. If we have a frozen position or we have an officer out, that's not hurt, workers' comp, the insurance is picking up whatever it is, sixty percent or whatever. We're able to move that salary to pay for overtime in the event that they're out or if we have extended sick leaves. As long as our salary line, you know, I think most controllers look at it, as long as your total overtime and salary line, you know, aren't over, they're okay, they're fine. But when you add the officer, you do have to increase your salary line.
Oh, of course, if we added.
I understand what you're saying.
And to Bob's point, it was requested. As to Bob's point, it was requested for the extra officers, not for that particular reason, but.
Right.
My rationale was that's certainly gonna help on the other end of that. So we have actually thirty-seven people on, on the force that are responding, not the thirty.
Since we're on the officers that are deployed in the military and the military is paying for their medical benefits.
And their salary.
And their salary, are we funding for their medical benefits?
No.
They're not receiving any benefits from the town of Bethel for medical?
No.
It doesn't even count as a second insurer or co?
No, no.
Wow.
Oh, but for pension.
Pension, if they pay into it, yeah, and they have to pay into it. So they'll use sometimes their vacation time to pay the pension benefits.
So, so Rich, I'm sorry. Kind of just trying to distill this down for somebody who's not in law enforcement. It seems like what we're saying is, look, we need resources, the equivalent of thirty-nine officers. And we will either have them all here and present, all thirty-nine, or we'll have thirty-seven deployed, or excuse me, thirty-seven engaged and we'll, we'll cover the other two through their overtime. So whether the salary is all in the direct salary line, let's just make up a number of one hundred dollars, or it's ninety dollars in salary, we'll then see ten dollars in overtime because the thirty-eight or whatever the number is, the thirty-seven who are here every day are doing OT work overtime.
But that's kind of the issue, what I would say the issue would be is the, the two additional officers get, come with benefits and the overtime is the overtime paid to existing officers. So, so in that way, you know, it's a headcount issue for me.
The department's trying to go to forty-one.
What?
So the.
Correct, they're trying to add to the.
They'll, they'll try to go to forty-one officers, so two of them are administrators.
Right.
Then you have three lieutenants and then you drop down from there. So their, their, their actual headcount, they want to go from thirty-nine to forty-one.
Correct. And so maybe you said more simply, I was being inarticulate before, right? We're going to end up with a service salary number. And that will be either salary alone or salary and overtime. But by having two people deployed, two officers deployed, we're not saving any salary money. That's kind of what I.
Definitely just going into the overtime, we're not paying it and the other guys are eating it up.
Much like workers' comp almost in a way, right, if the folks are on workers' comp. And Cynthia, your question, your point is, if we have headcount, even if they're deployed, you want to know what their, what if any benefits we're paying?
No, no, I was just saying that, well, you know, when the deployed people come back, I, I wasn't aware that they wanted to go from thirty-nine to forty-one. That was my misunderstanding. I thought it was like the two, they were trying to replace the two that were out. But no, that he wants to go from thirty-nine to forty-one.
Correct, to forty-one.
He shouldn't even mention those military people. It's too confusing.
According to their presentation, they have thirty-eights more officers, not thirty-nine.
Oh, so they want to go from thirty-eight to forty?
Did they not include the chief? Because I'm pretty sure he said they had thirty-nine.
Yeah, I'm just reading from his presentation that he did, said, that they had thirty-eight.
They probably made it clear.
And they're pretty sure it's thirty-nine, but we can find out when they.
So that was the rationale on the police department. Alright, Park and Rec, account three eight. Requested was one million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and one dollars. I'm sorry, one million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars. And the board of selectmen approved one million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Can you tell us where you cut from, Rich, like what the cut was?
Uh.
Was it contracted services?
Didn't you put something into the CNR?
Maintenance and repairs, it looks like, fifteen thousand?
Yeah.
How much?
Didn't you put something into the capital non-recurring, Rich? From this, didn't you put something in that capital non-recurring account from this when you made that reduction?
I don't see that on the register.
I think to Robert's point, it came out, at least on the detailed sheet, it came out of Park and Rec account, looks like three.
Maintenance and repairs.
Three one five, three fifteen. It's not listed specifically that I see on the capital non-recurring list.
So, Rich, did you think they're doing too much maintenance? How did you just take it out of the maintenance account?
It was, it's named like fertilizer, grass.
Not actually maintenance, such as stuff.
Supplies, cleaning supplies, I think was on there.
But Rich, you left contracted services completely alone, you guys kept the ten thousand. You put the ten thousand back in that we cut last year for mowing. The corporate parts, right? Yeah, that was ten thousand.
Yeah.
We gave up, it was like nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty or something? That was left then? Because that, that was the reason why we left the vent rack, remember?
Right, yeah.
So we left, so we put mowing, we, we put Clark Park back in the budget to contract that out. Correct?
I'm not sure.
Alright.
I have to refer to Bob on that.
Bob, am I correct that we've kept the nine thousand, nine hundred dollars that they added to contracted services to cut? Yes, Brad should have said yes.
Still in the budget, yes.
Thank you.
Because Matt said they were upset it wasn't getting cut enough.
Every seven days.
Once a week, it should be, yeah.
Alright, I just wanted to know.
So, I'm sorry, the, the fifteen thousand, again, this is something we'll talk about in more detail, but when I look at the footnotes, it looks like the fif- fifteen thousand pertains to Treework Park and Education Park. Is that why?
The park maintenance and repairs, yeah.
Right, the five three one five, but is it just coincidence, Brad, that those numbers are the same? Or is that the number, is that the fifteen thousand?
They cut out fifteen thousand exactly.
Was any of that gonna go to NCR?
No.
CNR?
No, no.
There was nothing in the benefits on the CNR. They just voted to remove fifteen thousand dollars from park maintenance and repairs.
And was it specifying nothing or specifying the fifteen thousand that's labeled Treework Park and Education Park?
Nothing is specified.
The amount in the account last year, the amount was forty-five thousand, it was increased to fifty-seven. I think what was supposed to happen was it was supposed to come down to forty-five, but even fifteen came out instead.
Eileen, what's in that category, if you don't mind me asking?
Um, the, it would fall under any field renovations, like would be residing fields or any improvements to that or repairs to irrigation. Park improvements would be the, the exercise equipment that would go at McCower. It would be replacing the dog park, increasing the fence at the dog park. It would be the, could be the well at the dog park. Those are items that I would do under, those are like outside of the daily operation.
I think, you know, we as the board of finance can decide what we want to do. I think it would just be helpful to understand what the proposal was.
Okay.
And again, the information we have, Eileen, to kind of track in Bob's number, fifty-seven thousand at fifteen thousand for Treework Park and Education Park, twenty-two thousand for park improvements and twenty thousand for field renovations.
Right.
So the fifteen could be the Treework Park and Education Park, if that was the intention from last night. Why don't we go with that and then we'll figure it out when we. Okay.
You know, and may, maybe the thought was lose some of that to the CNR account, I don't know.
Okay.
Any other questions on Park and Rec?
Nope.
Account three ninety, employee benefits. Requested was six million, three hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. Board of selectmen approved six million, three hundred and ten, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. Reduction of forty thousand dollars. And the cost factor was additional savings in the health insurance.
Is that all forty thousand in savings, Bob Kraslewski?
Yes, it is. We got an update from the partnership plan with the state and that represents that difference.
Thank you.
But what, what percent are we paying on workers' comp right now? You know, it comes out to, like when you figure fringe benefits?
A zero percent increase.
So what was it, like what is the percent of salary, like?
Well, it varies depending on, you know, what employee you have.
So like, let's say like.
A police officer, you're gonna pay a lot more and you're gonna pay for an office worker. You know, so, I mean, you can't.
It's all over the place.
It's all over the place, it really is, yeah.
But if they held it completely to zero?
Yes.
Zero increase.
Zero percent increase, both of them. Liability auto and personal property was the original zero percent increase. Then they were giving us a three percent on the workers' comp. But the claims have pretty much stayed off, they thought one was gonna escalate and it didn't. And they backed it down to zero.
Uh, account four fifty, I'm sorry, four oh five, government subsidies. Uh, the request was for four hundred and seventy-six, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. And the board of selectmen approved four hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. And the cost drivers there was for the heart plus system and the paramedic intercept program. We've never really funded the paramedic intercept program to what the actual really are. So they added more money to it this year.
Those two buses cost a lot. Fifty plus eighty seven. I'm, I'm at the top of it, yeah. Well, I just, you know, in, in discussions I might have, but the senior van is a senior van. That was one of the reasons to get the senior van was to offset the heart, the sweetheart bus or one of those heart buses. That costs quite a bit of money.
I, I think it was to make it more available to the seniors was the reason for the senior van.
Thirty thousand dollars a year. Yep, alright.
Okay, and utilities? Requested was two million, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. And the board of selectmen approved two million, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Rich, can I just ask a question, just because I'm confused, go back to their thing?
Yes.
I thought the senior van was independent of the heart buses.
She was just asking, man. Take some of the heart bus away.
Okay, I got it. It's just like another.
My recollection of it, that was, I think, my first year on the board, was that the, the senior van was going to be a more tailored service.
They got a grant for it, I recall.
Yes, just the four thousand dollars in May twelve.
But that can pick up a person.
And then we pay the driver.
And keep it operational forty hours a week.
You can go pick up and.
His heart and sweetheart run by Dan Barrett, who runs the heart and sweetheart?
Yeah, Bruce drives it too.
Andy drives it.
What's the organization? It's a regional.
Well, it's heart and sweetheart together.
Yeah. It's a regional, isn't it?
Huh?
How'd you like it?
I love it. I'm using all, you know, I'm, you know, a little bit driver challenged, because I can't drive.
Do you use the van?
Ah, it's great.
Well, no wonder the cost went up.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm helping you keep that grant. It has to be operational forty hours a week, and my intention is to use it forty hours a week.
You're helping, you're helping with the costs.
Oh, yeah. I love it.
Part of the problem now.
That's part of the problem.
It's hard transit.
It's hard transit. It's, it's a regional organization that runs it.
So is it like a private company, or is it state subsidized in some way?
It's state subsidized.
Right back.
Yeah, and, and we, they know exactly how many trips they make to Bethel, where they're going, and they charge us based on history.
So it's not a flat fee every year, it's based on how much we use it?
Well, you can see.
It's based on usage, yeah.
So it's, so it's used a lot then, so.
Mm-hmm.
Or it's expensive.
Or, or it runs a lot.
Yeah.
You see it runs.
That's true, it can come to Bethel and not take on any.
Well, last year we used a ten point two percent of the time, all right?
What does that mean?
Of the total usage.
But we don't get any of the, but people pay to use it, right? You have to buy a ticket to get on?
I don't, I don't think so, no, we're paying for it, so we can charge back for the, the use of the van.
No, you're talking about the van, we're talking about the heart bus.
The heart bus, the heart bus drives around all over town, right? And that's like fifty cents or a dollar, depending where you're going.
I think, I think that's a donation, I don't think that's a.
You're talking about the senior van, Bob.
No, they're talking about the sweetheart.
They're talking about a.
Time out, time out, I think Cynthia was talking senior van, I think Dee was talking heart bus.
I'm asking if there's any revenue associated with the heart and the sweetheart bus.
We've got a cross.
Bob was answering the question as if it was a senior van, like donation.
Why don't we get some more information on it? Why don't we get some more information on it? If anything, it, it's a note, a small donation.
Because senior van is no charge.
Yeah, but it could be for disabled people also.
We can't charge on that, because it was a grant to get it.
Right. Well, the, um, senior van is disabled. The senior thing. We can talk about this.
I'm really confused, like, they're saying there's no shit against the sweetheart bus, but there's an eighty thousand dollar line for it.
Right.
Eighty-seven.
Yeah, so.
So what's the sweetheart bus?
That's the mystery.
Disabled, disabled, yeah.
But that's provided through that transportation company. And that's independent of our senior van.
But we pay for it, yeah.
There's three buses.
Although the senior van couldn't handle disabled people, there's three different.
Enlist them, just so we all know, the three are?
The senior, the sweetheart.
And a regular one.
Which charges a dollar.
I think we have got the buses fully surrounded.
They're gonna make it.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe I.
All right, let's, let's go back, uh.
It would be helpful.
We'll go back to four-ten. All right.
But once you take that senior van, you're not going back to a sweetheart bus like that right now.
How's the?
Let's go back to.
Dabbled out. What do you want, Richard?
We'll go back to four-ten.
Please.
We'll go back to four-ten utilities. Do you have any more questions on the van?
We're gonna.
Uh, four-ten utilities was requested at two million, five hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. And board of selectmen approved two million, five hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. The cost driver there was the increase in, in the new tract for the utilities for the new tract field house. And it was mentioned that we would hope to put solar panels on that building to help offset the, the utility costs there. And once they get the programs up and running, they should be generating a income stream. And that will pay for the employees and care of the building, and hopefully some of the utilities of the building.
Yeah, Rich, I know we touched on it last night, I just don't remember what the answer was. What's the timing, like the potential timing?
According to Bill Karaty, he said by the end of the year, they're planning on, they're hoping to put the panels on the field house, and also on Johnson and Rockwell. So, the energy.
That won't be, that'll be the following year, because they won't be finishing the, the school ruse until the fall of this year.
Well, he said, he said all three were gonna be done at the same time, but let's say he doesn't.
Yeah.
Then it's just the, the field house, and maybe they'll wait another year and do all three at the same time, I don't know. But there will be enough energy generated from the field house to cover the entire building, plus excess for a part of the high school.
Yeah. If those panels are in place and operational at the end of this year, twenty-twenty, do we reduce the sixty thousand by some.
Well, you, it's not sixty, it's thirty. It's thirty thousand for electricity and thirty thousand for gas.
So it's sixty thousand total, is what's being added for the field house, but you're saying only thirty thousand of that.
It's fifty-fifty, yeah. And the gas, we can't do anything about, we can't generate our own gas.
But we could get a rebate of high school electricity if it, if it takes over for some of that, right?
Well, you don't know when it's gonna be installed, this, this, it's a roll of the dice right now.
Yeah, I mean, you can take it out now, and then we don't install it until the following summer.
Yeah.
And besides that, you can install it in December, how much are you gonna generate, generate February and March?
No, I understand that.
I mean, the sun's not out for a while.
We would save thirty on the field house electricity, but we also might save additional on the high school electricity.
You kick back.
Yeah.
And that could help offset the gas.
Bob, I don't know if you know the answer to this one, but, you know, they, they keep saying that we're gonna have solar, and we're gonna save money. But who's paying for the equip? They don't just bring those panels and drop them on the roof.
Yeah, they do.
Someone, if, if we're saving five hundred a month, part of that five hundred has to pay for the equipment.
We're not saving five hundred a month.
There's a, a third party associate.
It's not one for one, it's, it's not just, okay.
No, because, unless the town wants to buy the panels and put it up and maintain it, so there's a third party.
They're taking the savings and paying for the equipment, so we're not getting one-to-one, we're getting some savings, but it's not thirty thousand dollar savings, because we have to buy the equipment.
Aren't there grants and things from the state to do solar?
Through the utility companies, and that's what our energy commission looks for, if there's any grant money in that.
My understanding from Bob, I think Bob Kay, is that we haven't really realized any significant savings yet from.
I mean, I'm gonna hand out later on, but there's about, since they did the solar farm, about thirty thousand dollar savings already. But then there's savings that are generated for like this building and four other buildings in town.
Right.
Where the credit goes back to those buildings, that reduces our bills.
Okay.
But ultimately, like you say, Nick, I mean, the three together, the three together, there's a cost factor, because they're not gonna do it for free.
Exactly.
It's a twenty-year lease on that equi.
Isn't the whole point of solar to just keep your bills steady, rather, I mean, almost like when people do it, like when my friends do it, they go, the savings are is that your utility bills aren't really going up, you know, they're basically paying whatever a month. Well, that's my experience with it, I'm just telling you, is that the whole point of doing it is, they're not making, my friends aren't making money, but what they're doing is.
Paying for the equipment.
It's, it's basically.
You're creating a job, you're, you're paying for equipment, because in twenty years, when this equipment is, is wore out, dull, new technology, you start all over again.
Right, but, but their costs aren't going up, is what I'm trying to say, is their electric bill stays the same, was the same as it was two years ago, so.
They're beating the increase.
They're beating the increase, and that's where the savings comes in for them, that's.
As your utility goes back up, you're, you're, you're paying.
Yeah, you're kinda staying even keel.
But you are paying for the equipment.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
That's the whole.
Out of the savings.
Right. Yes, it's all point of the lease.
Point out the solar farm at the landfill.
But I think we still have a benefit.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
But it's not all, all the benefit.
No.
You, you're, you're giving it to equipment, right?
Yeah, so you, you know, it was the best, it's a lease type system, and we paid it off, and next month or years, we'll own the whole thing, and for a dollar, probably.
We'll replace it again.
Yeah, with the newer technology.
Well, there's a possibility, if you wanted to, you could buy the equipment and go on the field house. And that's what Karaty mentioned, you might not have to make that decision, whether or not you wanna do it that way, or do what you did at the, the highway garage.
Buy it once and then take the wholesale.
You get a service provider to maintain the equipment, because it needs work.
It's very, after twenty years, it's, if you buy it yourself, it's very expensive to dispose of it. I mean, I did some research, it costs like over a hundred thousand dollars to dispose of a, a medium-sized farm.
So, so bringing it into relevance for this fiscal budget, right, fiscal year twenty-one, we're not expecting.
No.
Now, what's changed? Now, I went to a few of those presentations on the field house, and, and statements were made that it was going to be self-sufficient from day one. Did something change in the rollout of the field house?
All I know is that it was built to support the solar panels, that's all I can say.
But I, Bob, I agree with you, the, the initial analogy was it was gonna be self-sustaining, but it's not, the programs aren't up and running to their full potential right now.
Well, if it was supposed to.
Okay, so for then this, nothing for this budget year, we don't have any savings we can count on.
I don't think so.
But then my question is if it was built to support solar panels, isn't that, maybe it's not normally part of construction, or, I mean, because it's taking place quite a long time after it's built, so I just.
Well, I'm lost here, are we talking, we talking about solar panels?
We're not.
The field house.
We're talking, they were talking about the field house, that's what I thought.
Solar and the field house.
Yes.
In utilities.
But that wasn't part of the project, this is after the fact.
Understood.
Okay.
And the reason why I'm asking about is, in utilities is sixty thousand dollars a year for the field house. That sixty thousand a year is divided fifty-fifty.
Right.
L P, natural gas and electricity. I thought, I think Rich, you're saying, I thought wrong, that when the statements were made about solar, day one self-sufficiency, it's at some point in the future. So for this fiscal year, we're not gonna have any opportunity for savings.
I, I.
So we'll look for that savings next year, we'll make a little note and make sure it's in next year. Rich, the additional five thousand for streetlights, is that related, where, where those going?
And that's what it's running right now, so we have to raise it by five thousand dollars.
I asked that question.
We raised, we brought it down to seventy-five, and seventy-five wasn't, um, wasn't part of the number.
Even with the new lamps and everything, the price thing come down?
Yeah, yeah, no.
Or was that, or was that part of the deal for putting the new lamps in?
We had it at a hundred a couple of years ago, and then we brought it down to seventy-five when all the LEDs went in. And seventy-five wasn't enough, we're still paying about eighty thousand.
Was it costing a hundred thousand when you put the hundred thousand in? Because if not.
A few years ago.
So if you budget a hundred thousand dollars for something, and then it costs seventy-five, but that wasn't enough, and it, now it costs eighty, wouldn't that be twenty thousand dollars you could be spending on it this year, or is there?
We had a hundred in the budget, three or four years ago.
Right.
Then they put the LEDs in, so we brought it down to seventy-five.
No, I understand what you're saying.
And then, now it looks like it's running eighty thousand, so we increased it by five thousand dollars.
I totally understand that.
Eighty thousand.
I'm just saying that, I, I'll talk about this later when we're deliberating.
I think the equipment was more efficient, but the rates went up, so we're chasing that tail, basically.
Could be that too.
We had twenty thousand dollar savings.
No, no.
Right?
No.
The board of finance went to seventy-five, and that was short.
But that's because that, no.
What?
We used to spend a hundred thousand on streetlights.
No.
Yes, that's what he said, before we went to LEDs.
It was a hundred.
It was a hundred thousand, he said it.
Okay.
So then they went to LEDs, they thought twenty-five thousand was gonna cover it.
And we were chasing the increase.
They were just short five grand on projections, so there's still a net savings of twenty thousand by switching to LEDs.
I misunderstood, thank you.
Glad I asked.
Okay. So that's it for utilities, we, we're okay for now?
All right, account four-twenty, miscellaneous charges. Uh, request was one million, eighty. One million, eighty thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And the board of selectmen approved one million, seven hundred, seventy-seven? Uh, no, the board of selectmen approved one million, seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Uh, this is for the wage contingencies for the upcoming collective bargaining process.
So what was the reduction taken for?
From that.
There was.
Wage adjustment.
Was that a wage adjustment?
Was it a recalculation of the wage adjustments, or what, what was the target?
Bob, why, why did we take three thousand dollars out of that?
Twenty-six hundred, that's the twenty-six hundred that was added back to the registrars.
Oh, that one.
If you go back to that account.
Oh.
Okay. All right, well, that's something to see though. Yeah.
All righty.
All right, the senior center was requested at two hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. The board of selectmen approved two hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. It was five thousand, seven hundred dollars removed to the C N R account. Uh, this included ten thousand dollars for a new program. And the senior assistant director assured us that they'll be making more than the ten thousand dollars for this program that she's presenting.
So Bob, their overall increase was like point nine-two percent total for them?
On the senior center?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Account four-thirty-five, the library, was requested at nine hundred and four thousand, five hundred and three dollars. And the board of selectmen approved eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and three dollars. That was a reduction of fifteen thousand dollars. And the note is, the, the capital needs to be handled by the C N R.
Nelson. What, what's the capital need for fifteen thousand dollars?
It's just a bottom line budget, it's actually coming out of the bottom.
No, no, I'm just trying to understand the reduction. We don't have, you don't have any capital.
There was no capital in there.
Right.
There was just a bottom line, fifteen thousand was taken out. And because we're a bottom line, it just gets taken out, sorry to speak up.
Nothing was moved to C N R is what I'm trying to, no, nothing.
That's just a placeholder in the financial statement.
So their increase now is down to right around one percent to, right, for the budget?
No, less than that.
Point nine-nine-two. Point nine-nine-two, right? Divide eight eighty-two, four nine-two, divided by eight eighty-nine, five oh-three, I'm not sure you give you the percentages.
So the fifteen thousand was not capital not recurring?
That's what they're saying, uh, this is the note from that, so it was going to be moved to the.
It's just, it's just a placeholder. A bottom line adjustment because we can't put it to any particular line item.
Uh, take, take back my comment, it's not being moved to the C N R account, it's just a reduction of fifteen thousand dollars. And I can't justify it because I don't.
Well, I, I was confused by it before. It, it, we have only bottom line to the library.
They're like the board of that.
So it's gotta be just somewhere, and so they put it in the.
There's nothing to move, I mean contractual salaries, and so it's, it's programming and, and hours of operations, and employee, that's what it has to be.
And you guys can do whatever you deem most important with the money, the money that's in there, so I think that's why Brad just puts it in the bottom line.
Well, it's, it's all of our increases to our budget lines and dim salaries, so we inevitably have to cut hours for building time in the end.
I don't think we're talking about the substance of it right now, it's just the presentation, the, the numbers that we see.
Yeah, there was no discussion, it was just a, it says there was a discussion, but there was no discussion, it just said fifteen thousand. They made the decision and went on.
Generally, they make a motion to discuss it, and even, so you're saying they, they did make the motion, but nobody said anything, and then they vote?
And, and the printout, it just says adjustment of fifteen thousand. All right, account four-forty, the debt service. Uh, was requested at five million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. And that's what the board of selectmen approved was, five million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. And the cost driver there is due to the Rockwell School renovation projects.
And, and just to blow the horn of the board of finance, that number would be a million one higher, if we do not take the proactive three-year approach that we took and pay.
Make your lobbying outside the panel.
That's only when there's an election, so.
Seventy five feet back, right?
So we're okay now. But you know, this is, this is.
Can you explain to me what you meant by that? What, what is it? I'm sorry?
Otherwise, there'd be another million one in here for short term. But since we've paid it off.
You paid off some debt and.
There's a million two, a million two of school renovation debt coming on. But the net increase is only two fifty one.
All right, uh, the next one, account four fifty, the board of education, was requested at forty eight million five hundred and thirty three thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. The board of selectmen approved forty eight million three hundred and forty two dollars and nine, I'm sorry. Board of selectmen approved forty eight million three hundred and forty two thousand nine hundred and ninety four dollars. Um, basically what it was, uh, the first selectman made a, uh, reduction to the, uh, request. Uh, went back to the superintendent's, uh, original request. And then, uh, at the board of selectmen meeting, we took another twelve thousand dollars to make it like a total of two hundred and two thousand dollars, uh, reduction.
So Rich, is this below, cause I thought the original request, when they added, when the board of ed added all those positions and, it came out to two hundred and ninety thousand on top of her original request, so, this budget's still probably thirty thousand dollars over the original request that she had presented, correct? Am I right?
Can you say that again?
So, the board, the, the superintendent made her budget presentation to the board of ed. The board of ed, the board of ed added approximately, if I recall the numbers we discussed, it was almost two hundred.
Little less than three hundred and half.
Seven or two hundred and ninety, so this budget is still over thirty thousand over her original request that she had submitted to the board?
Yes, that is correct.
Correct?
I, I had, the original request, uh, was, um, forty eight million three hundred and fifty four thousand.
No, I, I think the original was forty eight thousand five ninety three eight zero eight.
That's a revised.
Right, but that, I guess what I'm trying to say is, the superintendent who's ahead of the schools, came in with a budget, and I know value judgment, the board of ed added to it. There's still thirty thousand over what she had requested originally, is what I'm trying to say.
Right.
That's it.
Let me read this number to you. Forty eight million five hundred ninety three thousand eight oh eight was her requested budget.
No.
That was not her requested budget, that was the board of ed's requested budget. Her requested budget was two hundred and ninety thousand under that. Cause all I'm trying to say, we're still ahead, I mean, there's still thirty thousand over the original, her, the department had the original request.
Her original, I show as forty eight three five four nine nine four.
Right.
Say it again, Brian.
Forty eight three five four nine nine four.
It's the same thing as the first superintendent has recommended, okay?
So the board of selectmen cut twelve thousand off of her original request. Plus the two fifty from the other night.
So just the numbers were wrong, that we were getting.
Right, right, her, from what the board ed wanted, and her budget was roughly two hundred and thirty eight thousand. We put another twelve on it, brought it to like two fifty.
And again, I'm, I'm positive, we said each math interventionist was seventy thousand, which is two hundred and ten thousand. And then we said that the coach and, if you're allowed to crack me if I'm not wrong, the emotional support, was another eighty something thousand, which would bring us to two hundred and ninety thousand. So somewhere the numbers aren't.
They also had, um, savings in their health insurance. You know how there's forty thousand dollar decrease?
Oh, okay.
They got that in between, so otherwise.
In between presenting to us and their cuts.
So the bottom line, why don't we give them that, it's forty eight million three forty two nine.
Yeah, sorry.
Paul, I get that, what I'm trying to say, I'm trying to figure out.
What they originally proposed.
What, not what they did, what, what the superintendent proposed to the board of ed is what I was interested in.
Forty eight million three fifty four nine nine four.
And then they added.
That was the original proposed.
So was that forty thousand that was saved in the, um, health insurance, was that all board of ed?
No.
No, that's on, the forty thousand's on the town side.
Okay.
The board of ed also had savings, that's why when the board of, uh, I don't know. When the board of ed increased the superintendent's budget, it did not go up by just those four salaries. It was less the savings that they had found out in between the superintendent's and the board of ed's.
Can we, I think what Brian is asking, cause I'd like to see it too, is a walk between what the superintendent asked for, and what the current forty eight three forty two nine nine four is. Presumably in there is the cut that you all made last night, but also some other savings.
Oh, I don't know about that. I mean, all I know is that there was a cut last night of two hundred fifty thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars. And that's the difference between what she proposed, a forty eight three fifty four, nine ninety four, and what they presented last night.
What, what, what I'm trying to say is, is, and maybe I'm not explaining it. When, when the, when the superintendent presented her budget to the board of ed, not the selectmen, not us, she was at a certain number.
I'm trying to pull that up.
Okay, so the board of education, and again, there's no value judgment here, I just wanna be factual, said, look, we wanna do the three math interventionists this year, and we wanna do the psychological coach, I think is what they call it. And it came out to around two hundred and ninety thousand, added on to her original request that she made to the board, not us. So what I'm trying to say is, is that we're still probably between ten and thirty thousand over what the superintendent requested, to the board of ed, what she thought she needed, that's what I'm trying to say.
Well, but also, Brian, I don't think those were the exact numbers.
They just gave a.
Probably, yeah, numbers, and we were adding them up, and that's how you got to two ninety.
Okay.
But they went back to the original proposal of Dr. Carver.
So you guys looked at that and said, we're gonna even, got it. I understand.
Rich, have you basically took that off because you wanted to go back to the superintendent? Does the benefit account go down also, because we took out the three different?
It's not gonna affect our benefit account. They pay their own benefits, that's all.
But I think that's what Brad is saying, embedded, yeah, Brad.
It might be.
Uh, just to get back to Brian's first, they didn't add two hundred and eighty thousand, the superintendent to the board of ed. The board of ed added two hundred and thirty eight thousand eight fourteen.
So our numbers were a little bit off, then I said that, that's all where the confusion is.
Yeah.
But to be clear, the number that is here that the board of selectmen approved, it's actually, there's, there's, this is what the superintendent asked for.
Right, that's a.
A little bit less.
Right, it's twelve thousand dollars less.
I think Brian thought it was two eighty, and that's where the numbers.
I just went with the numbers they gave us at the meeting, that's all.
And, and the reduction to education services might not be this twelve thousand dollars, because I think, Brad, you said earlier, that they got some other benefits in here from reduced costs.
That's why when the board of ed made their adjustments, it did not, it was supposed to be like four hundred thousand in the salaries. But it only went up to two thirty eight because she had a reduction in health.
Okay, so that, that cost reduction was already reflected in the two thirty eight.
Correctly in there?
Yeah, okay, now we got it. So it is twelve, roughly twelve thousand dollars less.
But the benefits are still in there. Correct? So the benefits haven't been taken out yet.
Well, I mean, we would have to check with Terry, how she did that calculation, right?
Assuming when they presented their budget, she would've figured all the benefits in, right?
Yeah, but you know what, I mean, look at the timing, it might've been that budget, that she was, uh, the new budget, the board of ed budget, was probably before we got the email about the reduction.
Well, she'll be here, I'm sure we should discuss with Nancy.
But it's still a bottom line account, they can hire the teachers and still need the benefits, they can just move the money around.
Or they can take out.
Do whatever they want.
I mean, they could still hire those other poor teachers.
Yeah, if they want, yeah.
Well, Terry, Terry will be here tomorrow night, and if necessary, Thursday night, so get a, a good walk.
So are we all clear on the bottom line number for the board of ed?
Yes.
Can I go back to the bus?
No.
Which one?
Not the heart.
Get on it.
We'll talk offline.
Okay, all right, uh, account four sixty, the school maintenance account. It was requested at five hundred and two thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. The board of selectmen approved five hundred thousand, they made a small reduction of, uh, two thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. I had made a motion that failed to reduce that back to the original, uh, um, amount that is currently, uh, I felt that, uh, they're getting two new schools, um, renovated as new. They got new boilers at the high school, they have a new chiller at the middle school. I, I do understand that they, you know, still need to do, uh, uh, service, uh, programs on the new equipment for the new schools, but, I felt four fifty was still adequate, but I was, uh, voted down on it. So the bottom line.
You made that motion and you were voted down?
Yeah.
You made that motion, did you go back to it and it was voted down?
Yeah, Rich, you're, you're a facilities guy. I guess the question I would have, if not others too, if we were to go to four fifty, are we creating tomorrow's problem today?
Well, you, you never know what might die. Some things are under warranty, some things aren't, uh, you know, and if it was a major thing, they would have to come back.
They would come back.
They would come back, and you would have to fund the repair.
Right, but if you were to just do planning on a bu, a regular budget basis, the four fifty is reasonable?
My, my personal feeling was the four fifty, but, you know, I was voted down on it.
Understood.
You know, it, it's, these systems are getting very complicated to run, uh, that are being put in, it's, uh, in the police department and, and the new schools, they're, you know, very delicate systems. You get a lightning strike or something, although the new schools have lightning protection on them, uh, you could burn out a, a computer board that costs five thousand dollars at one time, so it's. So hit or miss.
I did just have a question on the four sixty account. I have his paperwork on here. His increase to his building repairs and maintenance in the contracts, he said went up because there had been no funding for Johnson and Rockwell. And now they increased it by fifty thousand to take care of Johnson and Rockwell, now that they're back. They didn't have building maintenance costs during construction.
Or pre, preceding and then during.
But the prior year budget, we always fund it at, right about the same amount. So if he added it back.
I think we'd need to look at.
But you, you shouldn't have, you shouldn't have any repairs, you need to have the programs to inspect the fire system, the sprinkler system.
No, no, I get.
But you won't have repairs, cause you're gonna have a one year warranty on it.
Right, I don't think I'm explaining myself well.
You are, it's the roof contract, you're talking about, he was putting back.
No, no, let's say in year one, their budget request, and we funded them at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Year two, Johnson and Rockwell are now, not on there, he didn't include anything. Year three, he's included fifty thousand dollars for Johnson. But going back to year one, it's the same, is higher.
But Rich is saying that, that we have a year warranty, so we have a year warranty on the renovations that they just did, so, really, any repairs this year
Right.
have to be covered by, uh, Rizzo, whoever the contractor was, who did, am I correct?
Right.
Cause those were renovated like new, right?
You still have to have the services to inspect the sprinkler system, but you won't have the numbers.
Services, right, I understand, yeah. So we would have to. We have to see what numbers are. I thought the four sixty account, he put his, like, roof repairs and stuff like that. But I don't think those, those inspections, do they go in the four sixty, or is that in contracted services, like he said in another account, I don't know.
He has a preventative maintenance contract.
I, it's really hard, there's five people talking right now, could, I'm, I'm having trouble even knowing who to listen to. Excuse me. It's one person at a time, it's just easier to understand. Thank you.
Robert, what did you find for Johnson?
Uh, he details, um, uh, four sixty three one three preventative maintenance, maintenance contracts, I think that's what you were talking about.
So it's not maintenance.
And it's went, went from two thirteen to two twenty four. The big jump he has is in, uh, school building repairs and maintenance from ninety two thousand up to one thirty four.
I'm sorry, two thirteen to two twenty four?
Yes, two twenty four seven hundred.
So it's increased a little over eleven thousand, so if you added eleven thousand to that four fifty, you're covering those maintenance things that you were talking about.
I mean, he does have, for Johnson and Rockwell, zero dollars for both of those.
Oh, for the maintenance and everything?
Right.
Yeah.
So the one thirty four is just for Barry, the middle school and high school. So the fifty thousand increase is not explained by an increase in Johnson and Rockwell? It's, it's somewhere else.
No, it, it justified eleven thousand there, it looks like, you know, for the increase of services.
Maintenance contracts.
Because there, there's been service still going on there, because as, uh, the building is being phased, so the town still operates part of the building while it's, as, as, as long as, as the building progresses, there's more and more new stuff, but the town still had to take care of the old stuff.
Well, ma, more maintenance contracts are coming on, on the new buildings.
Right, because they're, they're being sprinkled now, you're gonna have a sprinkler inspection and things like that there.
Bob, Bob will be here too, I think, um, and this, even for preventative, it doesn't look like anything for the, uh, Johnson and, um, Johnson and Rockwell schools.
One of my thinkings was that, you know, if there was a major problem, they're gonna come back there and ask you for the money, yeah, you know, they've done that in the past.
Right, and yeah, just trying to understand the fifty thousand, it doesn't look like it's tied to any of the.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Could I ask Bob or Brad to give out the details for the final things here, the final numbers? For the, the town side, the board of ed, and the, the total?
Uh, the total budget would be eighty one million seventy nine thousand sixty six dollars, as the board of selectmen recommended.
What percent increase in spending is that?
That's on the.
Three point nine nine. Three point nine fifty nine.
Three point nine fifty nine, so three, the shy four. Three point nine fifty nine.
Thank you.
So zero three, point zero three.
Yep.
Nine fifty nine. So.
My reaction.
I could just mention that the original proposal, I believe, was, uh, eighty one million seven hundred ninety four, four hundred thirty seven, and, uh, we got it down to eighty one oh seventy nine oh sixty six.
Can you break it down from town and board of ed, Brad, please?
The town total would be thirty two million seven three six zero seven two.
And what is that increase?
Three point six seven.
Okay, and the board of ed?
Brad, just to, just to fill it out, what are the components of the town, so operating?
Operating is twenty seven million fifty thousand three five nine. Uh, board of ed maintenance, five hundred thousand, and debt service, five million one eight five seven one three.
Okay, what's the board of ed?
What's the board of ed's increase?
Four point one five three.
What was it?
What?
Four point one five three.
Percentage.
And what is the amount?
The town by itself is three point two seven eight. The amount is one million nine twenty seven five twenty one for the board of ed.
That's the increase.
That's the change.
Can I have the total amount for the board of ed?
Forty eight three four two nine nine four.
Thank you. Wait, okay, got it.
I just, I just wanna check my math. So of the new current budget, right, if you wanted to knock it down, and again, I'm not, I just, my other thing, if you were looking for like a two point nine nine, you'd be looking at eight hundred ten thousand seven hundred ninety bucks, something like that.
Probably that area, yeah.
I did three percent. At three percent, it's four. At three percent, it's four, it's seven hundred, forty-seven thousand, eight hundred.
What, seven one?
Seven hundred, forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and four.
So if the Board adopted that, that's how much would have to be cut to get it?
To three percent.
And that's not including revenue?
That's not included, what, I'm sorry?
Revenue.
We have no idea. Revenue? Just rough estimates on revenue?
Probably overall, about a million dollars or so.
Look, is that, a lot of numbers being thrown around there, is that what kind of have?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
You got sent in last second.
Can we take a five minute break?
Although you are the best dressed.
Next time, we'll color it, Rich.
It was, it was especially.
Next time, could you give me color?
Yeah, uh, when I, if folks will mind, what I'd like us to do is to take maybe a five-minute recess, and come back, and we'll talk about how we're gonna address the rest of this evening, tomorrow night, and then if necessary, Thursday.
Okay.
Five minutes, please, or thereabouts.
It is warm, just in case anybody was curious, my Yeti, my coffee is just as hot as when we made it.
Is it cold?
Not Yeti, not Yeti.